... meeting to order. We did have a forum. We're missing one tonight. Commissioner Hawkins is under the weather, so keep him in your car seat if you would please. We'll start up tonight with Pledge of Allegiance first and the invocation. For the Pledge of Allegiance, we've got Brad Formwellson. He's a troop leader. He's got troop 118 from Zion Church here. And if you had a couple guys that come up and pledge some Pledge of Allegiance, they're appreciative. All group, are you going?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll stand, please. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to gather here tonight to discuss the business of Cleveland County. God, we thank you for these young men that have come here with the scout troop. And we just ask you to place your hand upon them and just guide them and direct them, help them grow up in wisdom and to do your will. God has reached one of the decisions we made tonight to be pleasing your side. We ask this thing in your name. Amen. Next item on the agenda is recognition of elected officials. Do we have any elected officials here in the audience? We have one past elected official, Mr. McIntosh. You please stand and be recognized, sir. Please be here at night. Next item, recognition of all veterans. If any veterans are here, you please stand as well. County Department of Defense, if you please stand and identify yourselves.
Chris Crick, County State Director.
Chris Crick, Tax Minister.
Thank you. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is motion to adopt the proposed agenda. Do you receive that ahead of time? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Next item, the citizen recognition. If anyone came tonight wishing to address the commissioners and didn't have a chance to sign up, if you'll please come up to the microphone and state your name and address this time. All right, same thing. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And I'll turn that over to our American County Manager, Mr. Beard.
Thank you, Mr. Pastor. We have six items for consideration to see in the consent agenda. First one is item A, which is the minutes from June 18th to July 9th, July 29th, county commission meetings. Item B is the tax collector's monthly report for June 2013. As of June 30th, which is the end of our fiscal year, county general wheeling personal property taxes were 97.94% collected. Our budget goal for the year is 97%, so we exceeded that goal. And we're in good shape down there thanks to Chris and the tax collector and first half. We certainly owe them the word of thanks and good job that they did here. Item C is the tax assessors monthly report for June 2013. During the month of June, we had property tax levies in the amount of $13,770. We had property tax supplements in the amount of $34,195. Item D is a budget amendment in the Department of Social Services. We're asking you to accept a $5,000 grant from the state employees credit union to be used to employ a summer intern for their junior leaders internship program. Item E is a budget amendment to emergency management department for tax review to accept a $24,000 grant from Duke Energy to be used for emergency preparedness as it relates to their two nearby nuclear plants. Item F is an order by Cleveland County Board of Commissioners directing Cleveland County tax collector to collect the 2013 property tax levy and any unpaid taxes remaining from prior ten years work. That's all.
Commissioners, you heard the consent agenda. Item on the consent agenda, community discussion. You can have a motion to the board.
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Next item on the agenda is, I know all of us are excited about hearing more information on it, it's Cleveland County Promise. And we've got Willie Green here to present. I know you've got several of your work members here as well. If you'd like to recognize them while they're here.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate the opportunity. First, I want to recognize my board, my founding board, Mr. Willie McIntosh. One of those, he's a dear friend of mine and helped me through all this whole process.
I've been doing it.
Mr. Brian Briner, Briner Bragg CPA. He's another founding board and has been very instrumental from a financial standpoint. He keeps constant numbers of ready insurance things right. And you also have Reverend Dante Murphy, who's a pastor at Shiloh Baptist Church and also the current president of the NAACP. In absence, and I think he should be coming here shortly, we also have Chief Jeff Ledberg, of course, our chief of police here at Shelby. These guys have been with me from the start to finish and I really appreciate their involvement in this program. Thank you. We have the board, it's just... Again, once again, I want to thank you. I appreciate it. I want to thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to speak to the county officials about the Cleveland County Promise. So I want to, first of all, before I get into my presentation, and I'll, it'll take a little bit of time, but I'll do what my father said. I'll take my time, but I won't take it too long. And given this, I think this is a program that could truly benefit this community in a lot of ways, on an economic standpoint, educational standpoint, and also creating jobs. Before I get started, also, I want to recognize one other partner in this, and I have a person in an organization or entity who has been a tremendous help to us, and that's the Shelby Star. They have Jessica, I think she's sitting over there. She's been really a fireball in getting this thing out in the public. And because of her articles, the people are excited about it. So I want to thank the Shelby Stars for their involvement. Just kind of talk to you about how I came to the Promise Program, how this was developed. Back in 2011, I was coaching in Arkansas, Arkadelphia, Arkansas, coaching for Washington Baptist University. So if you could say that about 10 times, you're very good. But when I was coaching down there, I came upon this Promise Program. And I started looking into it while I was down there and kind of put it on the back burner. Thought it was a great idea. This ability and thinking was a great kind of, to get it off the ground. It wasn't until I came back home in the end of 2011, early 2012, and actually, and I we experienced this, and we all know the story behind this, where we have a native, Brandon Spikes, who went to the Super Bowl in 2012. And as you can see, he's not too pleased with his years of living in Cleveland County. Right or wrong, whatever side you take on it, that was his issue, that was a concern. And it created a lot of uproar, but it also brought attention to a couple of things that not just happened in Cleveland County, but across the country. But then we started doing a little research. This article ran before Brandon Spikes. Brandon decided he didn't want to live in Cleveland County anymore because it was a bad place to... Josh here is from Cleveland County, lived here all his life, and he really don't see there's a future here. So both him and Brandon have the same common denominator. There's a reason why not only Brandon, but Josh and many others leave in Cleveland County. As a result of the Promise Program, Shelby Star made a great article, six pages in their newspaper, addressing the issue about what Brandon talked about and what Josh talked about, and what all of us talked about, you know, the reason why people leave in Cleveland County. We obviously have aging crisis. And you can see as well, they also talked about education, which we know that we also have an issue with education. And now with the new budget cuts in the state that we're going to use, I believe, 100 teachers and a lot of issues on, it's going to be a tripping effect where we're going to have problems with graduation rate, kids are building in the past test scores. So with those four stories, it just really excited, ignited me to talk about this Promise Program. Because again, I think it can change the way people see Cleveland County and encourage new businesses, new jobs, and also address the educational situation we have. We also have a problem nationwide where there's a lot of issues with tuition. We see that the tuition rate has doubled over the last couple of months since July 1st, and Congress have not moved on that. We also see where, in fact, the historical black colleges and universities are now considered suing the president because of now, in order to get a student home, they're basing it off of parents' credit scores. And we all know that the people who are going to be affected by this are students or entities that's going to be affected by this, so the lone minority community, as well as the historical black colleges and universities, because they are now tuitioning more than donations. So just an overview of what we want to talk about, and I'll kind of get to it. Again, leading to the issue with the aging crisis, our vision is really just to make Cleveland County a fair place to reside, as well as receive and acquire the education. We can, I'll zip through this, but I wanted to just talk about our organizational summary. That first sentence is very important. Cleveland County Promise, we are a nonprofit organization. We will afford to provide all graduates of Cleveland County, whether it doesn't matter if your race, your economic background, your social status, or your educational level, every student will qualify for a Promise Program. No one is excluded. In addition to that, we've looked, and there's not a family or business or person who's living in Cleveland County that will not benefit from this one way or another, every day. Again, our mission statement is to, you know, seek private donor donors to help prepare our young students for a future. Just a brief history, this is not something that I invented. There's a number of Promise Programs that have created and are very successful. The first one was started in Kalamazoo. Ironically, the same reason why they started in Kalamazoo is the same reason why we want to start here. The automotive industry was leaving Michigan, and as you can see, Detroit is bankrupt right now. And so they were trying to find ways to address the dropout rate in the educational situation, but at the same time, trying to promote economic impact and trying to encourage people to continue to live in Kalamazoo. It's just right down the street, when I played in Detroit with the Lions, and I think the population rate in Detroit has dropped from 1.5 billion people to almost 800,000 people. And so Kalamazoo was experiencing the same thing. So they kind of took a proactive approach and they created this Promise Program. There have been several Promise Programs followed. This board in particular, that we've looked at. The Kalamazoo, which of course was originated in 2005. Pittsburgh Promise started in 2006 as a result of the Kalamazoo Promise. And as you can see, all these are privately funded organizations, nonprofits. In Pittsburgh, you see that the Pittsburgh Medical Center has committed over $100 million, which is the upcoming MACHY grant. For every dollar that the public, that the program raised, they give in 65 cents, up to $100 million. In El Dorado, in Arkadelphia too, that I've worked very, very closely with. In El Dorado, El Dorado population is probably half of Cleveland County, and the only donor is the guy who owns Murphy Oil, and he's committed $50 million. And then Arkadelphia Promise is created in 2010, and it is funded only by Southern Bancorp and the Ross Foundation. Just a quick results from these Promise Programs. It's obvious that they have been successful. You see increase in advanced placement, enrollment, schools, decline in the dropout rate, which I'll show you, which is just startling, increasing graduation rate, years of rising test scores. The one that I really love is more parents involved in school activities. The parents are now fired up. They see that their kids have a future. They see that, hey, I cannot afford to send my kids to school, but now this Promise Program, we do it, so I want to make sure I do everything I can to make that happen. And once you see, history shows that when you have a parent involved in school, the kids are like that. Plus, the parents put pressure on the teachers to step up and teach, and you know, get those students who are the class clowns out of school or to step up because there's going to be a demand for it. We also see that the expansion of tutorial programs, nonprofit organizations, and mentoring programs. You see more kids enrolled now because, quite frankly, we do. We know the history of Cleveland County. We are a textile agricultural county. Not a lot of education was required to those jobs, so we had a lot of people quit in school. So the difficulty is, is a lot of parents want their kids to succeed, but unfortunately, they don't have the educational knowledge to help them with their homework. So this is why these nonprofit organizations will step up and feel that void to help that parent, help their child. The one that I'm also really excited about, and I was amazed at this when I started looking at this, the boost in the local economy, job creation. Just in El Dorado, when El Dorado Promise started, as a result of that, they've had 28 new students from 13 foreign countries, and families have located from 33, we've got 31, but 33 different states have relocated to El Dorado. And these are working, middle-class people who make too much money to afford any type of government assistance, but they don't make enough to be able to pay their kids to go to school. So now they're excited about it. They're going to those places, they're opening up their own businesses for the money that they've saved for their kids, they're putting back into the local economy, they're finding new jobs, you know, creating new jobs. In El Dorado, home sales went up 4.3% in 2007. At the same time in Arkansas, at the state level, it was declining at 8.8%. So that was a tremendous shift, where everybody else, or every city and state of Arkansas was going down. El Dorado was showing a tremendous increase in home sales. And you know, we all know, in 2007, we were in a housing crisis. And one of the programs, the minute, the day that they announced the Promise Program, they had a subcontract announced that he was building a $10 billion subdivision, and he's been very successful. These numbers are startling, but you can see in kind of a little graph here. You can see before the El Dorado Promise was introduced, they were at a dropout rate of 8%, while the state of Arkansas was at 5.2% or 4%. But you see the dramatic drop, almost 6% point from the year that, the year that it started in 2007, 2008, and it has continued to decline, but it's sort of leveled out in 2009, 2010, 2011, 2012. By comparison, if you look up top and you see North Carolina in red and Cleveland County in different colors, here's where we are. Now, we're, Cleveland County is above the state average and way below Arkansas. And you know, when we think of Arkansas, we think of poverty, we think of just really not a pleasant place to live, but you know, they're beating us in education dropout rates. Just a quick run of our program. All this information is on the website for people to see is www.theclaytoncountypromise.com. But just to go through the eligibility requirements, any student who graduate, as I stated, whether it's a public school, whether it's a private school, whether you're homeschool, or whether it's a charter school, if you live in Cleveland County and you've gone to school in Cleveland County, you should have the same rights as everybody else who you know for this program. So we don't eliminate you because of what school you go to in this county, as long as you live in this county, and long as you go to school in this county, you qualify. I'll get into the specifics of qualification based on the level. Again, the terms are, we pay for four years of tuition and mandatory fees only. Not housing, not meals, not any of those things, just tuition. And we base it off the most expensive public university, which is UNC Chapel Hill. Now, just amazing, when we first started this program and looking into this program in 2011 during our research, just less than two years ago, UNC Chapel Hill was at $7,198. So you can see just over the last year or so how tuition has increased. We will use a no-dollar approach, where the student must first fill out, apply for a passport, which is a pay-up grant, and don't come out of lottery. Whatever they get in that, then we will pay the difference, and I'll show you in a slide of how that works out. Okay, here are the residence requirements. We don't, we have, once we are able to start providing scholarships, you know, it's not fair for someone to relocate here, their senior year, and get 100% of the money. So this is how we base it, based off your school and how long you've been in Cleveland County. What additional requirements? You know, we also have a problem with kids not going to school. So this hopefully will encourage students to stay in school. Where we've seen this implemented in El Dorado and Arkadelphia, their attendance rates at 90%. So it can be done. Another thing that we're adding, which none of the program add is, we're making it mandatory for every student who, before they graduate and before they receive any of our funding, they have to attend and complete financial literacy online program. We have one in place. It's free, not only to the students, but it's free to the families, it's free to, free to the Cleveland County public. The great thing about it is, we can base the different modules on the level of the student. Obviously, a ninth grader or a 10th grader or a 12th grader does not need to know about homeownership at this point in time, so we can kind of piece build it. The other great thing about the Money Skill Online Program, they can do that at their own pace in the confinement of their own, as long as they complete by our deadline. But I can also, and my advisors will also be able to monitor their progress. So they can't go to the next module unless they pass the first one. But we will be able to know how long they're spending on and how much time they're spending on and so forth and so on. So it's very detailed. That way, we can gather those statistics and data and use for other research. Maintain eligibility, and I will do this pretty quickly. You have to have a minimum of 15 hours per credit semester and 30 hours per year. We will not pay for summer school. Here's why. This is addressed at aging issue. We want to start having the kids to have a mind frame to come back to Cleveland County. So we are requiring our students, at least their freshman and sophomore year, to come back to Cleveland County, volunteer at a nonprofit organization or real organization, or work under an internship with one of our prospective sponsors. That way, it teaches the child about their workforce, it teaches them how, it is also a resume builder, and it's always, it's also teaching them how to network. The biggest problem with our kids is, in our society, we live in a bubble, and the people that we communicate with are almost the ones we live with. And so what we're trying to do is make you expand your bubble to communicate with people that you normally wouldn't communicate with. So we're trying to teach them to give back to the community, be a part of the community, and hopefully, hopefully, while they're here, they decide, well, when I graduate, I want to come here and start a business. So that was the mindset. No other program has this as well. Funds will be distributed directly to the university. They send us an invoice, we send the money to the university as soon as they have it going. Our students allow to transfer. What we've seen, based on dropout rates, and we looked at, and you can see that the highest percentage of people who drop out of high school, college, are the people that have gone from their freshman year to their sophomore year. And then, once they go from their sophomore year to their junior year, it kind of slows down and then, you know, the dropout rate gets higher. We don't know the reason why directly, but I would guess, by us all going to college, they either homesick, or they really just couldn't cut it at that university. So if they re-grown somewhere else within the four years of their time span, then they still will be, and be qualified. This, what I feel is really the heart and nucleus of our program. No other Promise Program have this. This is our support center. We will have, at least, we will have four. Right now, we're working with two, we may work with two. But we will have career and financial advisors, or college and financial advisors, in every high school. We've already met with Dr. Boils, and we've established that partnership. Now, this person, sole responsibility would be to help the counselors at that school, but primarily focus specifically on making sure that the students are college-ready, make sure that they're filling out the necessary application. There's a lot of people, unbelievably, that doesn't realize that they can get telebrants, don't know how to apply for college. So this support center will be that need. Each, each high school will have a classroom filled with computers, and it will be sole purpose for that community, college and financial advisor. We will open 30 minutes before college, our school, and stay 30 minutes after. We will have some weekend session for parents to come and fill out pay-up grants or fill out forms. Our career financial advisor will specialize in identifying other scholarships that those students may or not be able to get based on their university, so they will have much knowledge in that. And they will also look at other grants and scholarships that are available outside of Cleveland County or outside of that university, some other foundations, the Gabe Foundation, the Oprah Winfrey Foundation, those types of things. So this, this will be a very integral part. Here are our support centers, the resources that you will have available with all the college applications. Now, our financial advisors will also set up visits for college visits, campus visits, but also arrange for colleges to come down and recruit. One of the incentives that I think this program have in getting our kids in the school is, if a university knows that this kid has gone through a Cleveland County promise, they know that kid will be ready, they know that kid will also have four years of tuition. So I would imagine UNC Chapel Hill and all those other schools, when they're looking at applications, and you got a kid from Cleveland County, you got a kid from wherever, I think they'll probably choose that kid from Cleveland County, knowing that they're going to get four years of tuition, but also knowing that they're going to have a kid who has been through a system that is very disciplined, and they don't have to worry about that student from the standpoint of dropping out of school or in the sense of flying out of school. Go back for a second. Services office, again, as I talked about, we have worked with them on the SAT preps. We will have evening workshops for the parents who are working nine to five. We will have one-on-one group session. We will have coordination colleagues and all, so forth and so on. Oh, go back a moment. We will also evaluate. One of the things that, when I was doing my research, it was very, very difficult to find data about when our kids leave Cleveland County, where do they go? We have no idea. We know where they go, we have ways to track them, they go to public schools, universities, but what about out of state? What about when they graduate? We have no idea. And these are the types of things that we need to have those relationships. So this, the support centers will keep this type of data. It will also have data on progress, where we can also use those things when we're talking about bringing new jobs and new businesses in, where we can use that data to show that we have a work-ready workforce. And we will also be able to evaluate based on the college going rate, based on the students who apply. All those data and statistics that we are not currently affiliated to right now. This right here is, that's why I opened up a question. As I was talking about, here's some data that we pulled. We have on average about 1,100 students. We got this information from the Shelby Star. We have about, out of that 1,100, we have about 76% of the students that are graduating at this point in time, which is about 669 of those 700, 836 of one college, which is about 80% of the kids who are graduating. And we also showed... Uh, and we also showed that of that eighty percent, twenty-four point eight percent are going to two-year colleges, Cleveland Community College, and four, uh, seventy-five percent are going to four-year colleges. Where they're going outstate, we have no idea. Uh, if they're going to a private university, we have no idea. Uh, and over to the right column on the same block, as I was stating, of that six hundred and sixty-nine, sixty-five percent of them did not, or went back to uh, to uh, college their sophomore year. And as you see, as they did at junior year, they stayed a little longer. Uh, to the right of that marks is the uh, the most expensive college near you, which is CCC. Uh, and the most, uh, most expensive university, which is UNC Chapel Hill, their tuition. Now, here's how the uh, distribution of what we call the gap works. Uh, we base it off of family's income. How we derive the data, we took in a lot of data statistics based on free and reduced lunch, based on demographics that we grabbed and we compiled it into a data sheet. Uh, and so you can see, let's take for instance, a person who's going to a two-year college, parents make less than thirty thousand all year, they should be able to receive all of the lottery grant and Pell Grant, the maximum amount. Uh, so they would not have to, they would not receive any gap money from the promise program. Obviously, they're getting other uh, resources such as support. And in addition to that, we can identify the scholarships for them. Uh, people that are making, uh, parents and households anytime making thirty to forty thousand, uh, the gap would not have to pay for them at a two-year college because of CCC tuition. Uh, and then when you get up to forty and fifty, to forty plus thousand, the gap pays a difference of a hundred and seventy-three dollars for forty to fifty and full eighteen, seventy-three for uh, for families that are making over fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, same thing for four-year college. Without going into the details of it, but you can see kind of what the gap pays down in the ground based off of annual household. Uh, that's the conclusion of my presentation. Uh, what we would ask simply from the commission before I take questions, uh, is what we're simply doing is we're in our fundraising stage. Uh, as I stated, Cleveland County, uh, the Shelby Star has been, done a tremendous job. We have received over uh, three hundred applications just from the students in the two thousand thirteen class. Uh, I can't tell you the number of phone calls I get every day and the testimonies from parents who are saying that this is what C D is, you know, it's, it's something that really inspires me to move on. So what we're simply asking of the commissioners, Mr. Chairman, is just a ladder of support right now, uh, that we can take to uh, our local businesses and businesses outside of Cleveland County, uh, to ask them to support the program. They need to see that the community is uh, one hundred percent behind this before they do. Uh, that, if, if any of my board members would like to add, then uh, I'll open up a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any questions?
I guess I'm, I'm gonna have some questions. I really supported his, but just the other day I was watching on television and they were showing household income. They were showing comparison, they said a household family making fifty-three thousand dollars, okay? And they used the fifty-three thousand dollars which you said, and the fifty thousand ain't nothing for support. But they showed the same faces as the family making less than thirty thousand dollars with benefits in the nineteen platform, they actually made more take home pay than the person making fifty-three thousand dollars. So that's my question, why would you offset a person, if that's the case, making forty, forty-five big thousand dollars a family, if you made less than thirty thousand dollars, you'd be better off taking a lower paying job and applying for the different benefits that we got in the community? And that's what they were saying in this relationship. I don't remember what channel it was, but anyway, they said that uh, a person making thirty thousand dollars or less, the family benefits more than that individual out there working making fifty-three thousand dollars. Like they pay taxes, and he takes all his programs, he pays the kids to go to school, he pays a different pay. So I guess that was my question. Why would we, where did you get the, the different breakdown for a different pay for a kid? I just averaged that.
Well, again, we looked at what the family, uh, actually stated, a person found making thirty thousand dollars or less, yes, they are uh, able to receive federal funding such as Pell Grants and, and uh, and lottery. Uh, and, you know, we, 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 when I looked at this program, I really, I wanted to look at everybody, but, but mostly that middle-class family who does not qualify, make too much money to qualify for uh, any type of Pell Grants, but they don't make enough money to get a student loan or afford a student loan. Uh, unfortunately, that's a disadvantage of, uh, but, you know, having uh, someone who makes thirty thousand dollars versus someone who's making fifty thousand. I, I think that the person, if, if you look at a person who's making fifty thousand dollars a year and ask them, would you rather make thirty thousand dollars and receive benefits of fifty thousand dollars? If that's the point, people say, I'm gonna save with fifty thousand because it's a matter of price and, you know, I...
Yeah, and I, I agree with you there. I said it's a matter of finance, really, and it's a matter of, you know, I mean, you know. And I guess I was told the same thing, you know. Every, every time I'm in a fight or something, it's always a lower number, lower number. And you sound like the children, forty to fifty thousand dollars, okay? They can get loans, but they gotta pay the interest back on that loan. When they get out, they gotta pay the loan back. So the kid making thirty thousand dollars or less in their family has the competitive edge on anyone finishing school if you've got to do the loan, the repaying and so forth. If not, I'm against the program. I, I support your program very well, but I think that something should be a consideration for those families that's in that check off. And you figure from the thirty thousand and fifty thousand dollar bracket, that's what the families are getting caught.
Well, now, if you look at it, go back a moment. If you look at a first kid, family who's making thirty thousand, fifty thousand, you see they're going to get more tuition where they don't need a student, they're not going to need to apply for that student loan that you referred to with the high interest rate. They're the ones who will receive most of the gap funding. Uh, not the people that are making thirty thousand who are already getting those benefits. So I, I only, uh, just...
Well, I, I guess I thought that Willie, those, we, Charles, that all of you, but you know, that stuff comes up. You know, it's uh, it's based on, based on, you know, different criteria.
Now, I can tell you, we've, we've made a lot of presentations uh, to all the roaderies and to a number of business people. And I can tell you that they see that this is a tremendous return on investment. Uh, they can see where this will encourage more businesses to come to Cleveland County. I know we have a lot of data, a number of data centers that are here. Hopefully, will encourage them to expand to different spaces, but also bring more data centers. I think this will be a, a great incentive uh, for Cleveland County. It will be a great recruiting tool. I know I was starting to, uh, Donna Melvin was one of the first persons that I talked to because at the time she was a veteran of roadi- roadery. And she said, this will be tremendous sort of hospital, medical center because we can't compete against, we, uh, Charlotte, uh, when we go out to try to recruit doctors. However, if we can still continue to pay a doctor what we can afford to pay, uh, and then give him an incentive that if you have two or three kids, at least we're covering your kids' tuition. That will cover, that will encourage that doctor to recruit you. So it's an incentive. It, it's sort of like a tax break uh, for those people who are in that in-between. And also encourage the new business side. And tell you, history has shown us that every last one of these programs have been successful and none of them are on the decline. In fact, they have now, and we're going to be attending uh, two PromiseNet conferences where now this type of program is starting to kick off and other cities are excited about it. So now they're having, having conferences to teach people how to create these. So uh, with, with, with the declining uh, funding from government, the private sector is having to step in, but the private sector is saying a return on investment when they have a program like this in there.
And I, I didn't answer the question, we think, because I, I do support it. Like I say, my only question was, and always fifty thousand dollars, like, you know, even if you recruit a doctor, he can be making all that. But anyway, I, I do support it.
I think, Willie, I think, I think there's several things in there you should elaborate on. There are very distinct positives, uh, elaborate on what Commissioner Hushy said too. Having been in education for several years, low-income families have less problem qualifying for financial aid and Pell Grants in particular. But there's one very distinct advantage the program has, is it adds to provide supervision. And uh, that's a negative, very distinct negative, federal government uh, in the education programs such as Pell Grants. And we see it all the time, kids who qualify with Pell Grants come here, get their Pell money. Uh, then they're under financial stress, uh, various reasons. They get the financial Pell Grant money and then all of a sudden, the stress takes precedence over education and the new school, uh, which defeats what Pell is really for. So I, I think, uh, the opportunity to provide supervision is, is always positive and plus the opportunity to provide assistance to the middle-class people in the gap that you referred to across the foundation side so often. People who've been making a hundred thousand dollars a year, it's been making a board, send their kids to school. People who are making fifty thousand with all the other financial stresses that they have on their families really can't really afford to send their kids to school even though they make, they, they want to go to school. They get caught with that squeeze if you refer it. So I think you got a, a great opportunity and I can see uh, where it might take time to deal with. Uh, and down the road, if they want to spend their kids' quality of life with those kids as well, spread out into the community too. I think, uh, appreciate your willingness to work with me.
Thank you.
Willie, I, I want to tell you how much I appreciate what you're doing. Um, several things that I see is, one thing I do want to see the kids come back to Cleveland County. That's something that is important to me and having a, a, an educated group of people and kids coming back to Cleveland County, understanding Cleveland County. And I've been very active in the last many years with uh, nonprofit organizations with children. A lot of them, low-income children, and a lot of them have the capabilities to do what they can do, but they don't have the support of them at home, the support at home. They don't have a family that's going to help them get to where they need to be. Um, because either they don't know how to do it, they don't know where to go, or they don't want to do it. And I would like to see the pattern stop in Cleveland County that I have seen over the years of continuing home cause of the family's support. So you guys are saying, hey, we're gonna help, we're gonna let people know from kindergarten on that when they graduate from high school, they're gonna have some funding there available to them if they're not afforded. Or if they can't afford it, we're gonna show them how to get, get the funds, whatever way it means, we're gonna give them the guidance. And that's what we need. I think that's where we're gonna start seeing that pattern, the change in our community and, and start strengthening our community by doing that. Also, give them the mindset that, hey, I can go to college if I want to go to college. And hopefully you guys will also get help if they won't go to college.
Absolutely.
Give them that support. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. You know, one of the things that we looked at, we, we really, you know, to, to my board, um, the members of my board was tremendous, who looked at this. And we looked at all of those possible possibilities. And I know when we look at that person said, well, you know, a kid who, the person, why should I support it when I make thirty thousand dollars or less? I'm not getting any money. But what you're getting is a support system. You're getting someone who is helping you fill out applications, help you get some other Pell Grants and other types of grants and other types of scholarships, is helping you uh, with tutorial program. So you may not receive any dollars from this, but you're receiving some resources from this. Uh, and so, you know, we looked at it respectively and, you know, when we look at this, most scholarship programs, not just here in Cleveland County, but across the country, either you have to be a four-point old, you have to be a minority, you have to be a low-income person. And that's not fair to the working middle class. And so we wanted to make sure that we do not discriminate against anyone uh, from this program. Uh, I was a C student and I graduated from college. Uh, you know, so, you know, uh, you don't have to always be an honor student to graduate from college and be successful. Uh, so, you know, we, we wanted to look at everybody. And like you said, Commissioner, I wanted to, and I'm glad they used the term promise. I want to promise those young kids there, by the time that they graduate from high school, that they will have the opportunity to go to college through this program as well through this program. And as you also pointed out, uh, there's a lot of parents who can't help their kids uh, who now they see that I have an opportunity or someone is going to pick up where I have not been able to help and to encourage them. So this is a, we looked at this thing and if you go back to the top slider, the first slider, you know, the topic of it, you know, our heading is, we want to invest, we want to educate, we want to enrich and enrich, we want to keep paying. This is not just about four-point old kids, this is not about low-income kids, this is not just about minority kids, this is about this entire community.
Do you have any comments?
Well, I'd like to say there's a, there's so much good about what you've shown us tonight. Uh, definitely puts quality of life, puts opportunities for, uh, not only for young people, but our families and our communities. So, um, I want to thank you for that. And there's, there's no shortage of ambitious people or ambitious programs that, that we've seen in our county. Um, that's evident by what's gonna be going on over the next couple of weeks, hundreds of volunteers and a lot of kids coming to play ball here. Uh, this is one of the most ambitious programs that I've ever heard of in Cleveland County. Uh, opportunity for uh, each one of our kids to be able to attend school with his parents. I want to thank you for that as well, so.
If I could add one other thing, uh, speaking to the Legion Law. Uh, you know, I'm having, everybody thought I was going to go to college to play baseball. Baseball is my number one sport. So when I'm looking at this promise program, those families who are coming here, I hope to recruit some of those who have some top-rated baseball players that would be in Cleveland County and be able to play in a, a top-notch, one of the best high school fields I've ever seen. Uh, and encourage them to come here, even if their kid does not get a scholarship to USC or some major baseball program, we will pick up that so they will still have an opportunity to go to that Division One school, much like our kids here in football. I'm, I'm a staple of biased sports and say, there's a lot of kids who don't get, because of the limited number of scholarships, don't get that recognition. But if we can still send that kid to a Division One school, let him go up there and show that universal, what you can do, then they'll give him a scholarship again. So it gives them a second chance to prove to people that we've got some great athletes, but it also recruits some of those parents that relocate here, play in that field, play at Shelby High, Burns, I'm a Burns guy. It'll be in a place where then we can expand our sports uh, uh, programs around here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dyker, a lot of information out of, of Mr. Green. The only question I heard of the whole conversation was, uh, did you see the letters for? Um, so if you would like to discuss that or if you want to discuss that now or if you want to talk about it, think about it and bring it up next week?
I think, Willie, even as quick as I had, I signed a deck of, of, with, I know the program. I'd like to make the motion that we do, to give them support, that we do some program.
I've got a...
Just a second.
First down, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And if you can get us, uh, carry and, you know, work up the letter, we'll have our chair when he goes back, sign it for us. We'll get that ticket.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on agenda is the tax, uh, for土地 property. We've got Chris Green, if you'll come up.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Philip and Beverly Love have submitted a single bid for the purchase of Marfum Number Two, nine six one seven. This is vacant, a lot is located on this main street in Shelby, just off of Catfish Drive. This property was acquired by the county through a full blooded transaction in 2006. It hasn't been offered for sale since that time. A deposit has been submitted, certified on the buyer. And once that happens, publication is made to that effect and opens up a real upset bid hearing. That has all been done and we're bringing a high bid from that process, which is a bid from Philip and Beverly Love, an amount of $500. The county investment in terms of taxes and costs associated with this property is $2,060. The current assessed value is $1731. They understand that they are responsible for bringing other fees, the amortizing, recording fees, revenue stamps might be associated with the sale or the measures so choose. The guidelines for disposing of floating property suggest that they will be able to, one half the assessed value for the amount of the county investment, which is greater. We've discussed in the past, these are guidelines and they don't fit every situation and the board has all the discretion to sit with separate, not even. Of course, it is an opportunity to get a property back into private ownership, which has always been something that we've been taking. So with that, submitting to you the high bid on this property, Marfum Two, nine six one seven, $500, we reveal a motion from the board to either decline the bid or to accept the bid and authorize the sale of the property. Any questions?
Mr. Green, any questions?
I understand you probably can't build anything on this property.
This property is, it is definitely considered for building. I won't say it's not buildable, but it would be expensive. If it weren't for the issues with typography, it would probably be a lot, somewhere in the $12,000 range as opposed to what we have. But thank you, Lord. Want to say a prayer? Yes.
I understand the neighbors, they supply, they grant, they know.
This bill is a joint property.
No, it's a common tax.
Any other questions? I understand the motion is clear.
I think if you talk to Chris, I just think the problem, like you said, the prime piece of property, I would like to get more for it, I would make a motion that we accept the bid and I can put it back in that place.
That motion by Commissioner Visions.
Exactly.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Visions, next two items on agenda are board appointments. We have two different boards. First one is Doris and Karen Home Advisory Committee. This time you have two people that have applied for that committee that both have been through the training that's all part of the county. And providing the payment, that board is in dire need of people serving.
We have two, two of them.
We have, I believe, more than two booked on that board right now. We have two people that have expressed interest in it and that have been through our training. A bid for a one-year term, their term expires June of next year.
Got a motion? Is there a second? Second? Over, thank you, sir. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Next one is for the Cleveland County Jury Commission. On the jury commission, we have four people that have applied for that position. Jeff Ames, Jeff Ames currently serves on the jury commission. And his term, let's see, if we appoint someone to this board now, their term expires on June of 2015. And the clerk of court asks that Mr. Ames be reappointed. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Over, is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Next item, Commissioner reports. Commissioner Allen.
I have been. Well, thank you everybody, this is regarding your convention and I just encourage anticipation and activities this week, Thursday night to be a very good night to go to the Arts Council, I've got a show here. People baseball district presentation on the Arts Council, which is a member of the city across the country. It's probably before that, display of people baseball leagues, eight years, years ago, it's very interesting. Then, of course, Saturday, I've got a show for that board running beginning at eight o'clock. And now carry on into the Saturday night. Big place concert, each and every person, person being here in shoes and the actors. A lot of, well, the day's late, full plans started up and that's just encouraging everybody. Use a microphone. If it's, if you drive around, this is a show, and you're all listening, have a lot of fun and enjoy. Just decide to make lives and have a good time, enjoy all the activities and feel right and present.
I'll be here, eight o'clock in the morning.
I will be here. I challenge you.
I'll be there, I'm not running.
I will say that I'm gonna run, I'm on the team.
Commissioner Visions.
So, I think that the verbal meeting, whichever department they did, they have, I think they did, he is somebody that hits the ground running. They have lovely, yeah, opportunities. He's had experiences very good before, so he can go out for the next three, four months. I think he'll be just coming through tonight. I guess if you're looking for a compliment, we'll play with that. We had the fire district meeting, that name, come on real well. Surprised they wanted, wanted guys that worked for, son of a river, was that one of their, a river detective, chairs. An amazing couple of stuff that you don't know much of a river, you know, when they come through the train or anything. The river, they have a good prediction of any area they enter. And even point out some things that, yeah, even some of the things that we know as a kid, we could give the river coming out a hard time, you know. But anyway, that, the best program, you know, I finished up last month. Of course, it's a poor, Rich Baldwin, Allen did a good job and reacted on the county with so forth and period was there. But, you know, we've had a pretty good month and hoping to have a pretty good, good.
It has been a busy couple of weeks and I would ask for everybody to keep the volunteers and especially Jim Board, Eddie Overbrook, in your prayers. If you see them walking around in the little days, give them a bottle of water and tell them to take a break for a second. They'll be, they'll definitely be able to work. It was neat for me this week, or last week, to be able to attend this program and see how everything kind of merges together. To hear Commissioner Allen talking, she did a great job, but talking about how, you know, our roles and things that we do in this position as county commissioner, you know, we need to do things to bring young people back here. And then to hear Martha Clinton, County Promise, how that ties into that is, it's neat. And it definitely puts a lot of pressure back on our board, puts names in perspective for us here in Speaker Mike's time. So thank you so much. And if there's anything else, I'll, there can be a motion to adjourn.
First and second, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you so much.